We're gonna need it, we're gonna, well, you have to, we're gonna need it. All right, who's got the seat? I've got it.
Is that a reading?
Oh, I don't know.
There it is.
I have it. Oh, okay.
This is it.
This is sixty-four.
Oh, just a little bit. We don't read before you proceed with it.
Not until they come in for sale. That's the person who had it. They're very efficient.
Okay, did we read it then?
Yes. That's right. We approve them.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's a little after ten o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. Those of you that have cell phones, please put them on silence, please. Can we all stand and do the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and the general star. Thank you. We have the minutes of August twenty-sixth. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as, as mail? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the claims for April, I mean, for, for approval. Okay, discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item three is discussion and agreement with US Attorney's Office regarding special assistance of US Attorney of Drug Prosecution. Mr. County Attorney?
Hey, there, sir.
Good morning.
I guess I gotta apologize, there must have been some kind of transmission problem between myself and US Attorney's Office. They were supposed to be here, but I'm not seeing them.
You're not seeing them?
So, we're probably gonna have to...
Well, you wanna postpone it?
Yeah, we'll probably have to postpone it and reschedule it. Somehow those missed wires somewhere in there.
Okay, all right.
Since they were gonna come and answer most of the questions that you guys had and that I had as far as hiring, salary, for the person who's gonna be out, that kind of thing. Well, they said postpone it.
Okay.
All right.
So, we need a motion to table it, or?
Whatever, now, I'll let the board know.
Okay. Okay, the second?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I leave, I'd just like to say I was saddened to see that you were asked to leave the picket yesterday. That was, this made me sad for whatever reason.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Appreciate it. Item number four, we have the Human Resources Department will pass around a memorandum of personnel theft and actions and we'll ask for signatures on that. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Boyk?
Yes, sir.
There's been so much misinformation on this item coming from the news media that I thought this morning we'd straighten it up and if they would run it or print it or whatever they do. The people we have hired, we have retired sheriff's officer, we have a twenty-three-year police officer that we hired, we have a former military person, we have a person with one-eighty-fifth security, and we have a marine. These people are all eligible to join the ASME Union. I think there was a bone of contention that they should belong to the Sheriff's Department's Union, but that's not a decision that we make here. This is a union matter. They will be armed. Everyone will go through security. Now, I'm sure as time goes on it gets a little lax, but to begin with, a hundred percent of the people will go through security. If there's any questions from the media that they don't want the answer to, I would be happy to answer them now. Brett?
I'll just speak out as Press Club President. I'd like to be specific about what misinformation has come from the media. I think it's unfair that you would say, and we have five media representatives here right now, so I'd like specifically to know what misinformation's out there. I don't think I've reported anything incorrectly, Larry.
Your station...
So, if you're going, if you're going to accuse us in a blanket like this that we have all had misinformation, please give me a list of the specifics. As Press Club President, I'd be happy to address them.
All right. I don't have a list, but the one thing that sticks in my throat is I think all of them at media, your station included, reported they would not be armed. That was a fallacy from day one, and that was explained at this board, but nobody chose to, to run it.
I don't think I've ever reported that.
As your station, again, to say you, you know, you work for a station...
I'm the, I'm the news director and my newscast, I can tell you we've never reported that.
I think you better go back and check.
I'd be happy to. Any, any newscast, Larry, Larry, any newscast, I write and edit them. Any newscast I've ever read or read, that has never been reported, you're wrong.
Nobody, I'm not.
Well, we can disagree again.
All right. I've had my say because I've just gotten tired of all the innuendos, the mistakes.
But you can't give me specifics.
I just gave you one.
I told you that's not true.
And I'm telling you it is, but you go back and check.
Well, again, I write and read it every day, you're wrong.
It's a difference of opinion, but...
No, it's not. It's a fact that I haven't reported that.
You may not have. You personally. But don't tell me your station hasn't because they have.
Nobody has read a newscast on KSCJ that's...
Okay, well, it's...
Anyway, I've had my say, I've got it off my chest. Do with it what you will.
All right, thank you. Our next item is the...
We have one.
Okay, those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the approval of the request for remaining on dental health insurance by an employee.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We also have the authorization of hiring process.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have a approval of a resolution thinking the commending years of service. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That will not be presented until the twentieth, I believe, and then we'll read the resolution to the individual that's retired. And that's in your department, Rick, I believe it is.
Yeah. We had it here this morning, we thought it was gonna be on...
Well, it won't, it won't be read until the twentieth. Okay, thank you. Item number six, we have social services.
What you have before you is the Justice Assistance Grant. We received word that it's awarded, we submitted that, I believe, back in June, May or June, February twenty-seventh, the Board Supervisors for Submission. It was submitted and I responded, so now we have to accept the grant, sign the documents, and then permit myself to submit that electronically that Woodbury County is accepting that grant.
Okay, is there a motion to accept and sign the Bureau of Justice BJA grant award?
Move it.
Second.
Okay. Who does our...
This started out with only three hundred thousand dollars, then was split, because this is the one that's split, they're contributing to the city, and now it's down to forty-three thousand, forty-three thousand dollars.
Forty-three thousand, four hundred and ten thousand.
We went from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and twenty.
That's government funding for you. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
We need another motion to sum up for electronic question.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I think we'll do, we have a time set here under item number eight, and this is for a sale of property. And the property is parcel number six-two-three-nine-two-five, located at one-oh-eight Fourth Street Avenue, or Fourth Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience to speak for or against the sale of this piece of property? Saying none, now, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Move it.
Public hearing.
Second.
Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Is there anyone in the audience to bid on this piece of property at one-oh-eight Fourth Avenue?
Good morning.
Good morning. Would you give me your name, please?
Matty.
Good man. Are you bidding?
This is the one-oh-eight property.
One-oh-eight Fourth Avenue.
Yeah, my minimum bid is two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars.
Two-seventeen. Is there anyone else to bid on this piece of property? Is there anyone else? Anyone else? I entertain a motion to sell the property to Mr. Matty.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. We have another piece of property to sell on parcel number six-two-four-nine-four-five, and we'll open the public hearing on that piece of property. Is there anyone to speak for or against the sale of that piece of property? Saying none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now, is there anyone in the audience to bid on this piece of property? Okay.
My minimum bid is a hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Okay. Is there anyone else to bid on this piece of property? Just a minute. I didn't have it on my agenda, the address anyway.
It will have the justice board. Can you describe that?
It's a whole strip of timber off of Highway thirty-one.
But there's no street address on it.
Yeah.
It's in there. Is there anyone else to bid on this piece of property? Anyone else? Anyone else?
General, who is selling property to Matty?
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. For this property. Let's go back to item number seven. County engineer?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We took action last week to close a couple of pieces of railway that were never developed by the county to assist those property owners in clearing title to those properties and for the purposes of recording, recording them, I have two quick claim deeds. The first one to quit claim railway for David and LeBron Blood. This is for Alstottard Avenue and the sixteen-foot wide alleys between blocks thirty-four and thirty-five of Morning Sight Second Edition and all of Morning Sight Avenue that lies along south end of those two blocks as well.
Is there a motion?
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item D.
The second one is to quit claim alley to Joseph M. Murray, executor of the Patrick M. Murray Estate, and this is for sixteen-foot wide alley between blocks one and thirty-four, basically, or between lots one and thirty-four of block forty-four of Morning Sight Second.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second. Here's a second. Discussion. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
After the meeting, I'll try and get with you and Pat. This requires notarized signatures, so I'll witness your signatures and get that taken care of.
All right, you have another one here, a couple more.
Yes, I do. We have consider approval of a permit to work in the right way for Lundell Construction. This is a tile line crossing. It's in, across one-hundred-ninety Street and Rock County.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item D.
Our final item for today is signing contracts for supply of propane for heating purposes for, this is for Secretary of Road Department, Emergency Services, County Treasurer, actually kind of sheriff's in on this one as well.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
That's all I have on the official agenda for the day, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll get these signed and back to you, Mark.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number eight, we have the approval and resolution of suspension for Kate F.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the approval of the resolution for the abatement of, for St. Thomas the Episcopal Church. Is there a motion on that?
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I am staying supportive of that. I think we're finished with that. We have the, next item would be, the sheriff. Sheriff Drew, you wanna step forward and go through your plan? You were on the agenda, what, three weeks ago, for nurses?
Correct.
And you did get us back. I think the information, data necessary for us to try to make a decision here. I'd like you to walk us through this page by page. You've got Plan One, Plan Two. And we'll go through this, and if there's any questions from the board, we'll certainly open it up, you know, for, for those questions to be answered. So, I don't know who you wanna start.
Well, I'll have, I'll defer here to Deb, but before I do, I just, one of the piece of information I think you would have received was incident reports from July first, two-thousand-and-thirteen, to June thirtieth, two-thousand-and-fourteen.
Okay, right.
Paper suit incidents, one-hundred-and-seventy, medical incidents, seventy-six, belligerent inmates, thirty-nine, information, twenty-one, restraint chair, nine, suicide one and attempted suicide one. Booked eight thousand and twenty-two people from July first last year to June thirtieth this year. So, that kind of gives you a little idea what the jail situation is and what we've been going through. I think Deb probably has the best case scenario of the hours and how they would like to proceed.
I have a question. The total of that, everything but traffic monitoring, Curry Hills and the LEC or your average day with population to a very high jail, is that just the LEC?
Um... Greg, what did you have on that? Was it Curry Hill included in these numbers?
Yes.
It's everything. I thought it was, I just wanted to clarify.
It just, you know, I mean, from eighty-seven, we had seventy-five inmates until about the time that I think we contracted with the Mercy, you know, we were probably averaging around a hundred and ninety to, last year we were averaging two-hundred-and-forty-nine inmates.
Last year?
Right.
All right, Deb, go ahead.
Thanks. The first scenario would be twenty-four hour per day coverage, seven days a week, holidays, weekends, and basically that is what would be the best scenario for all involved, and that would require full, full-time nurses and one part-time, and then I have that estimated cost there at the bottom. This is due to revolving meds that are to be given, a high level of care. We do have nurses now that are on-call on the weekends and during the night, and they do get called quite a bit because the officers are a little unsure maybe of, you know, what to do with certain inmates, so they do need that medical advice, and a lot of times then the on-call nurse will get called in, which leads to overtime. So, this, there would be no one on-call with this scenario, and there would be a medical person there twenty-four-seven.
This would mean five full-time nurses and one part-time person.
That is correct, for that scenario, and...
And that would cost us thirty-three thousand, a little over thirty-three thousand per month in S and L?
Correct.
Does that include fringe benefits and all of that?
Benefits that Mercy nurses get, is that what you mean?
Well, I, we would be, this would be a contract with you all, so the benefits would be paid by you, by your...
Right. Mercy pays their employees' benefits, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That answered that question.
Scenario two is sixteen hours per day coverage weekdays and then eight hours on the weekend, and the weekdays would be covered very well till ten PM. During the night, there would not be any coverage. There would be that on-call person once again that tends to get called in quite often, and then, of course, that is overtime. Weekends would be just six AM to two-thirty PM, and then, once again, someone would be on-call.
I'm not trying to get into scheduling here, but at times you have three people on. Right now, you just have one.
Right.
You need three.
Well, no, there are, there are times, most of the time we do have two. There's a lot of times where we have two nurses, and a lot of times there'll be an older lab, one, one comes in early, like at six this morning, and then the second nurse will come in a few hours later due to getting all the meds ready. Right now, this morning, they were at two-hundred-and-forty-three was the census, and so with that many inmates, we have to have more hours, and there's just overtime. It's just, with that many, right now, the county is having quite a bit of overtime to pay because we don't have enough nurses. So, a lot of, during the day when we have to give out all the meds, the day hours, we do need two nurses quite a bit of the time.
I, I was just wondering, the resource, do we better have a full-time nurse at night instead of...
We typically don't give...
I don't wanna get into your scheduling, I mean, if that's the best way it works, it's just, I was kinda surprised by the numbers.
I think that's because you're dispensing medicine.
That is correct.
During the day versus after we lock it down for the night.
That is correct. And the next scenario cost is the twenty-five thousand per month. And I did have an average in there as well, right now, the average has been over twenty-thousand per month, and that's without the four nurses, so...
And there's two and a half nurses now.
Right. But the two and a half nurses... Yeah, the average for April, May, June, July was twenty-two-hundred-and-thirty-five, and that's four months. Because of overtime. And we seem to be on a trend where the census is, is rising at the jail, and the level of care seems to be rising as well. July was, and is, was a pretty tough month, and August is looking about the same.
Yeah, you can see that by the numbers.
Yeah.
What, what's, do you have the current cost with the two and a half nurses that we have? What is that contract?
It's just the same per hour rate.
Same per hour rate?
Yeah, thirty-six dollars an hour. That is the same. It's usually though, because of overtime and nurses getting called in during the night or weekends, just where the extra cost come in.
Well, if we do the five, it's like, it's going to cost based on the cost estimate you have here, a little, little over four-hundred and five thousand dollars, almost, almost five hundred thousand, and this scenario two with, with a number of nurses, a little over three-hundred-and-six thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, that sounds accurate.
Dennis, do you know what our, what our current costs are right now?
I think last fiscal year when I had of what we pay Mercy medic, or Mercy Business, there's two planes, Mercy Medical, Mercy Business. Mercy Business, I think, where we pay the contract at, I believe last year that was around two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I believe last week they said before we do the trip, I wanna put words in your mouth, that would be an increase of one and a half.
That was not for the twenty-four hour coverage, that was...
So, I think we can live with that. We're gonna have to get together with our Mr. Butler and find out where we're gonna come up with the money, because that's an increase of right around eighty thousand dollars. I could live with, you know, going with scenario two.
Okay. Dennis, where would we pull that money from? Would that come out of reserves?
For the current year, it'd come out of reserves. Now, I'll put a asterisk behind that unless we get this other program going, which if there's more, we'll need this program going for people going to other counties to spend license fines, things like that.
Right.
If we get that going, we wouldn't have to pull out of reserves, and we have some money there to work with. Otherwise, if it comes out of reserves this year, come fiscal year fifteen budget, we're gonna have to look at the fifteen, sixteen, I should say, which comes up in January, summer of January, February, and decide if we're gonna raise taxes for it, or get this other program going. This other program is very, very essential to get it moving.
Right.
Because that's where revenue would come from, to pay for this and maybe some other things also.
Yeah, there would be new income.
And new income to help attach to it, too.
Now, the proposals, I mean, what you suggested here, Larry, with costs accounting, an additional eighty thousand dollars, is that, are those figures correct?
Yes, approximately, yes.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
So, what...
So what, scenario two is adding what?
One and a half.
One and a half.
One and a half.
Scenario one would add two and a half?
Correct. Well, actually, it would be three, because we're at two and a half now. So five, scenario one is actually five and a half, five full-time, one part-time.
You think you can do it under scenario two?
Not twenty-four hour coverage, not what, you know, not what the jail actually needs, no.
But I, I did go back and, to prepare for the decision, I would take a tour there, I'm quite busy over there. I did go back and review the tape from the meeting a couple weeks ago. I may quote you, having a half would be a big step in the right direction.
And it would be a step in the right direction.
Realize it doesn't cure everything, but it would be a big step in the right direction in here through our, our budget here. I think we could start with that.
I would agree, if we could get one and a half now, and then when it becomes time for budget, then you would look at, I really think with the acuity of care, the number of inmates, and the nursing staff, hours they're working, and the concerns they have for full-time would be, I think we, alls we do that when we, when we know is we set ourselves up for future issues and good running.
And that time, we would, we would know if we would have extra revenue, or if we would have to make cuts in other areas to fund needs here, or raise taxes, I mean, there's different ways to fund it, but right now, since we don't have to pull it out of our reserves, I would agree with you, it's a step in the right direction. And I would make a motion to go with scenario two.
Good. There's a second.
Does that include reserves? Where the money would come from?
Yes, it's a good one.
There's a second.
Second. I think that you'd really need to look at this for budget coming up.
I would agree.
Uh, I think we're asking for it. We don't get this covered.
Babe, do we still have a, a mental health board?
Right.
Do we still do that with, with, with the people that we have over there?
Right. They come with the...
Yes, they come, our, our mental health, our project compass comes, are up in the jail every morning. They're checking on every individual that's been booked over the night, and then they go down and recommend to the judges if they should be evaluated for project compass. And we have our, Jim Rixner has put together, so we have our psych doctor that comes in for a couple hours a week on Fridays. And we also have some, where they do med checks and do assessments on our new books. And our therapist also comes in Friday and does individual.
Well, I have a question that came to me before, and I agree with you, it's just...
So the psych person coming in on Fridays is recommending the meds that you're dispensing for the one part?
Yes. And, and saying that, because Nurse David and I just talked about it, what we're doing in the nursing system is we're picking the worst individual because he's only there for two hours, and he will only see four for assessments, is that correct?
Yes. He'll see four if they're for like the half hour or something. They look for the med checks, he'll see seven. And there's a lot of individuals that should really be seen, but we have to put them off, and it's like the, if, if that was going to, we have to pick the worst to be seen because we only have X amount of, he can see, so.
I understand that.
We didn't get the numbers this week, but is project, are you still in operation?
Yes, they are. What we're doing is, is, Mr. Clausen, we're bringing them directly to the main jail, and so Jackson Recovery is coming to the jail, and we're working that out and putting them in our multipurpose room so that we can keep that program moving.
Like yourself, and have a good lady name for them.
Amy?
Amy?
Yes.
Send the program going on work in the jails.
That's, that is correct, but right now, our numbers are so high, we don't have a choice. And so we're isolating these individuals as much as we can so that they're not getting, you know, influenced by the other inmates. And that is just a very short period of time, and...
But I think what's brought that up is we have inmates in the hospital, and to, to save on overtime, we've temporarily closed the facility for a short duration so that we're not paying through the nose on overtime, and brought those four, or five, or six to our facility, because it's the only way, because when they're in the hospital, they need to have correctional officers and deputies on top of those people. So we've had some incidents where we've had people up there with heart conditions, strokes, and this, this summer has had issues of medical conditions. And so, you know, it's what I've said forever, we're Robin Peter to pay Paul, we're just moving around and adjusting and doing the best we can to keep those costs down, but in turn, the costs are going to go up medically because they have to have the treatment. We try to get them signed out, but some of them can't be bonded up. Today, we had a judge sign three orders to release people over. They were, they were within a day or two, so the courts are aware of our situation, and we're getting some people out. I think one of the biggest problems that we have going on is subsequent public intoxication. It's been on the books for a long time, versus public intoxication, public intoxication, they saw the judge and they were out. Subsequent was now they have to serve thirty days in our jail. That becomes a huge issue because most of them are career alcoholics, and within five days, we have D T.'s and everything else.
Is that, is that a new law, or has that always existed, or just...
Somebody found that code section as, as killing.
Is that right?
That's the, that's the best way to put it. And it's, I get the point, I understand, because they're out in public...
Right.
And they're laying on the street, and so, but then we become the dispensing center for rehab and going through D T.'s, and sure enough, after twenty days, or we can maybe get PJ to get it down.
So that's really what's kind of creating these numbers?
That's, that's some of them.
That's some, absolutely.
But the severity level is, is way up rather than, we wouldn't have those folks if that was not applied.
Well, George, I think we have a dozen, don't we?
Yes.
It's still quite a few.
It's, yeah, it's twelve, and what we've done recently is we've worked with marshals to unload some more inmates, and we're sending some off to jail. But here's the other scenario. To get into prison right now, you, it's like getting reservations. So they're so crowded that we have to call them, we're, we're on a witness.
So they're really bottom...
Killing.
Well, and we're back to the, a lot of the board remembers when we used to do jail reservations.
Yes, they do.
We're back to that. And there's not, there's no solution at this point, you know? When Sheriff talks about the subsequent intoxication, that's just a small portion. We have so many high-risk crimes now, and they're in the jail. And even when we're talking about the subsequent intoxication, we can't put them in the main general population while they're going through D T.'s. And so that's holding, or that's tying up one of our other cells, and the nursing staff and the officers watching this person, because pretty much, Mr. Boykin, the minute we know that we're going to keep them past that twenty-four hours, we're starting D T. mess on it. Because these are such bad alcoholics, you know, we've got to help them so that, you know, they're not suffering.
The nursing seems like a short-term fix to this, and we talked before about a task force, I know Mark, you said Lisa McNeil runs one that needs quarterly, but I just wonder if, you know, we don't need to meet more often that group or ramp up the efforts because this is a very complex problem that seems to be coming in many different directions.
I, I want to go back to the mental health issue, which is driving me crazy. If you had six people up there with broken legs, would you put two of them off and tell the doc had time to fix them? No, you wouldn't.
Absolutely not.
So you've got a psych coming in and seeing four a week, and there's another four at ten, sitting there with broken stuff, but we don't have time because we don't want to pay the money. Hello?
Well, and my two cents, we really need twenty-four-seven nurses. I understand budget, and I, I agree with it a thousand percent, I know it's tough for everybody, but liability-wise, we need that twenty-four-seven nurses with the type of population that we've got up there. And I know you've looked at the, all the psychments that have been prescribed every month, and it's huge, and we need to be monitoring those people, you know, twenty-four-seven. We're getting diabetes, too, you know, we all know diabetes is on the rise, and a lot of these inmates are checked in, and they're maybe haven't been on insulin for three months or longer, and if it happens during the night when there isn't a nurse, that's a lot for the officer to be dealing with, you know, to try to figure out what that inmate is going to need, which is what usually leads to a home call to our on-call staff a lot of the time. Yeah, because we don't know what the blood sugar should be. When we take our blood sugar and they have been off their medication, we don't know how much insulin to give to them, so we're calling Nurse David, or Perla, or Lord to help us to determine what we should give this inmate.
Who's taking their blood sugar?
Our, our officers are doing that through the night. We're, we're doing that, and then, okay, so what does this mean? And then we're calling the medical staff, the nurses, and say, okay, this is what, this blood sugar shows, how much insulin and what kind of insulin should I give this individual?
Mark, it reminds me of the Holiday Inn commercial, where he stated the Holiday Inn, but it wasn't a doctor in that commercial. That's some of the assessments that we have going on by correctional officers, it shouldn't be done, and that's, that's a big concern, is the acuity of care. I'm just looking over this, and I know you, you guys have antibiotics, insulin for diabetes, heart medication, H I V. meds, cancer meds, seizure meds. These are just some of the, along with the mental health and psychotic medications that's necessary for those that are suffering from mental illness. It's, uh, it's way over, much correctional officers.
Well, you're, you're seeing a combination of, of everything in a facility there that we have to keep people in, you have no alternative, you really don't.
Right.
And we have, as you know, limited reserves, and, and I guess I could piggyback on what Dennis said earlier, we've got to find some new income from somewhere so that we can do, do better than what we're doing right now. I would agree, you probably need twenty-four-seven treatments out there right now.
I do.
For us to do that, we would have to pull another half a million dollars, you know, out of our reserves to do that.
About a hundred thousand.
Well, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but...
I, I can't get there.
Well, anyway, it's, it's going to cost us additional money. We're going to have to look at the budget time, you know, increasing, you know, our, our budget by X amount of dollars. We're at the three dollars and fifty cent per thousand level now. So it's, it's, it's really a, really, really tough question. Are we going to have, I'm thinking that when we start going through the budget process again in December, are we going to have to request from the state to go over the spending limit based on some of the responsibilities we have to account for?
Raising the cap.
Raising the cap. And there's nothing, it's none of you all's fault out there, it really isn't, it's just the environment that we're in right now that's causing this problem.
Dennis, what fund does this come from?
This will come from general basic fund.
And what do we have in reserve?
We have about twenty-four percent now.
Which is?
Uh, about two, about four point million, four point eight million.
Four point eight?
Yes. But we have seven hundred thousand of reserves committed already to a C F. Rice project.
Right.
And we'll get paid back that, unfortunately, four years down the road, one thing's going to start coming in, so it's kind of hit on our reserves now, but we're already committed to that. But this, I just did a calculation...
What, does the state say we should have twenty percent?
State recommends twenty-five percent. Our policy says twenty percent. So we try to stay around that, and we are above a little bit, but we need to be above a little bit for a C F. project, which is a needed project, which will provide revenue down the road. But like I say, that is down the road always. But in relation to this, it's seventy, paying four nurses, divide that out by three oh two, three oh eight comes about seventy-seven thousand nurses, so if we hire one and a half, that goes and costs us more, seventy-seven plus half of that. If we hire the scenario one with three nurses, you're up to two hundred and ten thousand.
Well, we have to do what we can to try to relieve this problem for you to a certain extent, we just got to do that, we have no other alternative, I don't think.
And we've got other problems. I don't know how long we can have Prairie Hills empty.
Right.
Hopefully not lose our licensure right there.
We're okay right now, Mr. Clausen, and it's just a matter of, we don't have staff. We burn out everybody that we have, putting them, doing overtime, and so we're trying to do the best we can of what, what we have. And we need Prairie Hills, we need to be back out there because the population and that is just, it, it was all we could do, you know?
My question, and I'm just saying, it brings up more problems.
Right, it definitely does.
And there's...
And I know because...
Only so many dollars to go wrong, and...
I know, but...
Even raising the cap, because actually, it's going to be very difficult.
We're, we're always preached to that not being able to afford something is not a good defense for when we get sued, and so that worries me because who will be up there? Will be people like myself and saying, I'm sorry, we couldn't afford to do any more than what we've done. And that, it, that really, really, I know, concerns the sheriff, Major Stone, and myself very much to have the proper medical staff that we need.
It concerns us, too, you have such a lengthy discussion, huh?
Nursing, I mean, I'm certain, Mr. Boykin, we can also lose our nursing license, and I have to work for a few more years, as you might want to say, so I kind of need it.
Yeah, I understand that. Any more discussion?
Hey, clarify the motions. What is it to...
It was to accept scenario two, using the funds.
What's the scenario two specifically?
To increase the nursing staff by one and a half.
One and a half, that's right, that's good, thanks.
Any further discussion?
I'm going to vote against this, not because it's not a good step in the right direction, but I think it's a wrong step, it should be scenario one, I think we're making a huge mistake. We're band-aiding something that's going to create big problems.
Mark, I think we realize that, but we're going to come up with the money, that's...
That story's worn out. We have reserves and we could do that, which would take us into the next budget year.
Do you want to withdraw your second, then? Second then?
Did I second? I withdraw my second.
Well, we can leave it just laid the way it is.
Well, we can't leave it the way it is, I mean, we've got to do something here, and so I entertain a motion, one way or the other, on scenario two or scenario one, one or the other.
My motion still is for scenario two, to add one and a half nurses until we can come up with a better plan.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion now, until somebody comes up with, with some money, I don't know what else we're going to do.
We should better do something we can, but if I just will relieve a little bit of the pressure, hopefully more than we anticipate, but at least we'll do something.
How soon do you think we can...
Well, we'll...
...look at scenario one?
I think immediately. I mean, we were contracted with you all through Mercy, and as soon as you add that one and a half person, it will start immediately.
What's she talking about, scenario one?
Oh, five and a half.
The, the bigger...
Oh, the bigger one?
Yeah.
Oh, the bigger one's going to be definitely discussed in, in December when we talk about, you know, the whole situation with the jail and what's going to happen there. I didn't realize that we didn't have anybody out there. Prairie Hills and that's going to be taken care of because we've got additional expenses going on out there too. And I can understand why you would have to, you know, based on the numbers for jail, Sheriff, where you'd have to combine, you know, the resources that you have to, you know, reduce costs. So, I can understand that portion of it. But we also have ongoing expenses, you know, out there too.
Right. They're still cooking and doing all the things that I think were the biggest issues. But once, once we get these people out of the hospital, we'll be back where we should be. You know, we, we tried reserves and when you limit your number of reserves, as I said earlier, there's only so many that can work the evening shift because they have other jobs. And you have a bigger pool to draw from than we can have reserved at the end of the day. But we're, we're using them in all sorts of areas also. So, we're, we're just out of people to protect those. And so, we, we use this method temporarily. And as Lieutenant said, we're, we're okay with it, no issues. And as soon as we can get some inmates to the prison and get some federal inmates out, they're out of the hospital, we'll be back at Prairie Hill.
Okay, any further discussion? Those favor the motion indicate you're saying aye? Aye? Those opposed? Aye. You're welcome. We did. Item number, number two here in giving individual or group wishing to make a presentation on item out on the agenda.
Can I have some?
Yes. Give me your name, please.
Sam Nation, taxpayer. Just a few questions for you. Last November, the Woodbury County Teen Court program was shut down. And, but you're still paying somebody to operate it, but it wasn't. In January, Mark Holson came, made a presentation, part of it was for teen court. Said the teen court was going to see a thousand cases this year. So, now it's September, teen court is not operating. They have seen no cases, but you're still paying somebody to do the program. And so, my question is, is this a good use of taxpayer funds?
Well, we still have to get a report on that subject, so I don't, I don't know that to be true yet. So, we need to get a report from his department.
Okay, so, well, it's just something I want to throw out there for you. You should check into it. My other question is, the first T program was discontinued a year ago. Yet you're still paying the executive director of first T and providing support for the program.
How are we doing that now? That's.
Are you providing a cell phone? Office supplies?
For the first T?
Office time?
No, we're not.
There shouldn't be a.
Absolutely not.
Well, he's still on the county payroll.
Yes, he is.
So, will that program be audited the same as any other nonprofit that is receiving county funds?
I imagine so.
Okay, those were my two questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll investigate those.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I saw in the journal a couple of weeks ago that we have increased due attention to a hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Yeah.
And I got a memo from the director saying he recommended a hundred and seventy-five.
I didn't get that memo.
You sent it to me.
I didn't send it to you.
Yes, you did.
A memo of a hundred and seventy-five dollars?
That's correct. George Boykin. Who made that decision to go to a hundred and fifty bucks?
This came from, this was the recommended amount to the folks that we contracted with. And we were supposed to get information back from them whether or not they would accept it.
So, who made that decision?
I made that decision that we would send that.
So, you hijacked my vote. Don't I get to vote on those things?
Yes, you do.
Never been here.
But it will come back to you.
It's a little late.
It will come back to you.
Last week, we spent thirty-five thousand for ambulance. Mr. Clausen, you said you'd get with him on where we would take that money. Does that ever come back to the board?
That was this last week and Dennis and I have had trouble getting together.
Well, number one, it shouldn't leave this board.
It's where? Where do you want to take the money from?
He recommended reserves.
Well, it's been a decision yet.
And I don't know how far you're going to complete your reserves for. You can't.
Well, but you can't take those votes out of this room.
There's no votes taken out of this room.
Well, that's trouble, there's no vote.
Well, there will be.
Mark, what are you saying? Spit it out.
I did. You hijacked the vote.
When this board.
You and Dennis would get together and decide where it would come from. That's what you said.
And come back here.
Oh, I didn't hear that part.
Well, that's what we said.
What about the hundred and fifty per day? Where'd that go?
Well, it still has to come back to the board for approval.
This thing was set in May.
Well, it was a feeler for those contract people that we are, I have the contracts with.
But it appeared in the journal that we're doing it.
I know that because the journal inquired about it.
It must have written, it must have been wrong. That's it.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Jaker Patrick. Eighteen oh nine Bronson Blacktop Bronson and I, well, I was here about a month ago. Had some questions and you sat right there and you told me, I'll check into it while I get some answers. All right. Father's Day weekend, had a lot of rain, had a lot of flooding. Basically, Mr. Clausen, if I did something to you or didn't do something to you that caused you property damage, would you hold me responsible for it? Fair question. If I did something to you or negligently did not do something for you, would you owe me responsibility for those actions or lack of action?
If it was possible, I'm sure.
Okay. I told you that I paid a drainage ditch tax. Your engineer said, there's no such thing. I got this in the mail. I will let you see that and you tell me what that is.
Where does that come from?
Your office, the treasurer, the county.
Mark, is that a state tax or is that a county tax?
He pays into the farmer's drainage district, but does not pay for the ditches along County Road V thirty-eight.
Who's responsible for maintaining the ditches?
The secondary road department is responsible for maintaining those ditches.
The county.
We maintain those ditches to drain the roadside. We do not maintain them to drain private ground. That's what the drainage districts do. Now, everything that comes out of your property eventually goes to the farmer's drainage district. That's why you pay a portion share of that tax.
That doesn't go to the county.
That doesn't go to the county secondary road department. If it did, we would send you directly to the farmer's ditch to request your ditch cleaned up.
How far from the roadway is the county responsible?
We're responsible within a right of way.
And the right of way is how far?
I would have to look and see what it is there. I'm guessing it's around fifty to sixty feet or so.
Okay, well, well within thirty-five feet, Senator. Now, I drew a map. I'm not a mapper. Just so you guys can be familiar with where we're at and what we're looking at. Eight hundred and forty-one feet, here's my point there. Right under the Bronson Blacktop, I've got arrows kind of indicating what direction the water's going. Within thirty-five feet of the roadway, those arrows take a hard turn into my property. Water just bleeding hemorrhaging on my place. My lane's eight hundred and forty-one feet long. At the end of my lane is a shed, quantity. Seventy-three inches up was a watermark. Behind that, I've got a plow truck. I lost about three acres of grass. I had to pull out a hundred and eighteen trees and shrubs from all the damage. Water's sitting there. I'm out between sixty-five hundred and seven thousand dollars for services and, and things that, you know, I'm a paycheck, paycheck kind of guy. And this shouldn't happen. There's nowhere for the water to go. Your engineer, the last time I was here, said that I'm not sure if there's a culvert under your driveway or not. We'll have to get a metal detector. Two questions. One, why is there not a culvert under my driveway? And if there is, the ditches have been maintained, therefore the culvert's buried, so the water has nowhere to go. It just isn't going to go down the hill, get to my driveway and go, whoa! Can't go there, we're just going to go back down the hill. It's got to go somewhere, it's going to go onto my place. So, if there's no culvert, water can't go anywhere. You'll see that private farmer, a little scratch there? That's a private ditch that had to be dug out by a guy that paid for it out of his own pocket so water could go somewhere. We pumped water and pumped water and pumped water and it just kept running back onto our place because there's nowhere for the water to go. Because right down here at the corner of the Bronson Blacktop and one forty-one, there's a tube, culvert, whatever you want to call it. And there's a door on the one end where it says half-buried tube. There's a door there. And I don't know if that's one of those manual open doors or if it's water pressure that opens that door. That door is half-buried. How's it going to get opened when it's buried? And that comes from a maintenance issue. You said last time I was here, we've got twenty-seven hundred miles of ditch to maintain.
That's correct.
Do a little bit every year and we might not have this problem. You told me on the phone last week that, well, we're going to get that ditch dug. We're going to maintain it sometime before this winter. If it would have been maintained prior to, I wouldn't have lost everything that I lost.
Understand.
So, now I'm here for answers.
Well, he has done a survey on that, that area out there. And I assure you that based on what I've learned from our county engineer, that problem, I don't know if there's a culvert under your, your property here.
If there is, why isn't there one?
I don't know. I can't give you that answer.
And if there was one, I'm not a guy with one.
There is no culvert under his driveway. His driveway is the old Highway one forty-one embankment. When VOT moved the road from where its current location is to the current location to the west of his property, the old road embankment was left in place and became the driveway for that property. The ditch that he refers to that was filled in the private field was the old Highway one forty-one roadway ditch. Over the years, farming operators closed that in as private property. Those people were able to do as they chose. The ditch is designed to flow to the west. Both the north and the south ditch is flowed to the port and then south along the blacktop.
It's designed to, but the flaw is there's no tube for the water to go through.
There was no tube put into your ditch. And why that wasn't done as part of the design, I have no idea, but we are going to rectify that situation. We'll go out there and make a.
Well, it's already out of the yard. I think the dam's already been done.
A lot of water damaged in this flood regardless.
Well, I understand that, but nobody's here speaking on that behalf. So, I got to stand up for the people that aren't here speaking. So, what are we going to do about it?
Well, we're going to take care of it. I mean, he's, he's already told you what he's done and it's going to, and it's going to be taken care of, sir.
Okay, but that's a little bit late. A little bit late for the damage we incurred.
We can't predict what Mother Nature's going to do from one day to the next.
Okay, now, now, this last weekend was an act of God, the crazy.
It always.
This could have been prevented with a little bit of maintenance. So, I'll give you a month to digest it and I'll give you another month with answers, just like I said that I would. So, see you in a month.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board members? We have an executive session to go into in a few minutes. We want to take a break and then come back to an executive session at your general relief issue. Resets?
Resets.
Not drainage.
Ask about nursing, security. That's okay.
Well, it keeps them from coming back across the road.